We're gonna call our meeting to order. First item is the invocation by Jerry Ferguson, our Prescott Valley Police Department Chaplain. Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Mallory.
Let us pray. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be your name. May your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Thank you for giving us this day our daily bread and for your forgiveness of our sins. Help us, oh God, to be as forgiving of others as you are to us. Thank you for your many blessings in our lives. May we not take them for granted, but realize their source. Your word tells us that every good and perfect gift is from above, coming down from the Father of the heavenly lights, who does not change like shifting shadows. Thank you also for the challenges of our lives that make us more dependent upon you. You tell us, oh God, to trust in you with all of our heart and lean not on our own understanding. You tell us to submit to you, and you will make our path straight. I pray, Father, for this town council, that you will give them the knowledge of what to do, the wisdom of when and how to do it, and the courage to act decisively. I pray for the safety of our community and of all of our first responders. I thank you for knowing what is best for our community, and I offer this prayer of thanksgiving and praise to our Redeemer. Amen.
Thank you, Chaplain.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is roll call. Diane.
Mayor Skug.
Present.
Vice Mayor Nye.
Present.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Grossman.
I'm here.
Councilmember Mallory.
Here.
Councilmember Rooney.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Next item is proclamation Patriot Day, and I believe Darlene Packard is here to receive it. Do you have it, Diane?
Healing Fields of Northern Arizona Patriot Week, September 8th through the 15th of 2017. Whereas from the tragedy of 9/11/2001, a new spirit has arisen, a stronger sense of family, community, brotherhood, and patriotism, and we have come together as Americans. And whereas America is fully committed to ensuring our freedoms remain unfettered and sovereign for all generations now and forever, and whereas we wish to honor and remember all those who lost their lives and who have demonstrated the ultimate sacrifice for this country, and whereas we wish to honor and pay tribute to the men and women and families who were affected in our own town, as well as those who worked so diligently to help our people recover, and whereas commencing September 8th, 2017, with the placement of the flags of the Prescott Valley Healing Field of Northern Arizona and with the commemoration of the tragic events of September 11th, 2001, we join the entire nation in the recognition of Patriot Day, September 11th, 2017, to remember and honor the invincible spirit of America and its heroes. Whereas this commemoration should be conducted each September 11th throughout the land to include the promotion of global peace and goodwill, the advancement of patriotism and love of country, and the remembrance of those innocent victims who died September 11th as heroes, one and all. Now therefore, I Harvey C. Skug, Mayor of the town of Prescott Valley, do hereby proclaim September 8th through 15th, 2017 as Patriot Week.
Thank you, Diane. Vice Mayor, any comment?
For me, it gets more exciting every year. I remember well our very first year to put the healing fields up, and we had so much enthusiasm to get those flags up that we had to hold back the volunteers to put them up because they were ready to get it all done in the morning, and we had all these volunteers coming in the afternoon. And I knew then that not only were we doing the right thing, but our community wanted to be there for us, and they've never let us down. And thank you for all your hard work ongoing every year to make this such a positive emotional opportunity for people to come and feel whatever they need to feel.
Councilmember Mallory, any comments?
No, I just, it warms my heart. It's been an amazing time every year, and I get emotional, but I thank you guys so much and all the community. It's important, you know? And I just always think about these people that got up that day to do a normal thing, and they didn't return. And that sits hard for all of us, so thank you.
Darlene, comments and introduce here.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce my team there. Awesome. Molly Hoary, she is our volunteer coordinator. Sandy Schaefer, she is our... Education, yeah, education. Jeremiah King, he runs our Patriot Run, and he is my fellow on-the-radio guy, and he is my right-hand person. And Heidi, Heidi is our PR person, and she's awesome. Thank you, guys. And I'd like to invite everybody to come out September 8th, 8:00 a.m., to help set up the flag and take down at September 15th at 4:00 p.m. Monday, September 11th, is our Patriot Day ceremony. I'd like to invite all of the council to be there, and everybody in the audience. If you've seen it, you know that it's very moving, very traditional, and I hope you all be there. 3,000 flags plus 19 for our Granite Mountain hot shots.
Anyone else have any comments?
I'm looking for volunteers.
Oh, come on.
I'm always looking for volunteers. Not only do we ask people helping for putting up the flags and taking down the flags, but also we have an information booth, and we're looking for people like that. What's the website? We'll get back to you on that one.
Facebook page. Okay. Actually, it's on the town.
I'm involved in education for this healing field, and I want all of you who are parents and grandparents, which most of you are, to know that you can bring your children. We also have an essay contest that will be going on this year. It's just an amazing event to bring your kids and make them aware, because anyone who's 16 or younger has no idea of that day. So please, talk about it in the community, talk about it to your fellow parents and grandparents, and bring these kids, because that's part of what we're trying to do. Make people aware of what it is to stand strong as Americans.
Also, as part of Patriot Week, we want to invite the community out on September 9th at 6:00 p.m. to a patriotic concert in the Theater on the Green outside the Civic Center. It's gonna be a great night. We have Shawn Michael Perry in concert, and he's got some great music to share with us. And we also have the Yavapai College Brass Quintet, who will be starting that off with patriotic music. So it's gonna be a great evening, and we hope you'll come.
Darlene, you wanna hold your certificate up and any other comments? Any other? Well, thank you so much. Heidi, you're not taking a picture tonight. What's the deal?
She's here and there.
She's here and our camera is there. Thank you so much. Oh, wait a minute, there's, there it goes. Chaplain Ferguson will do it. You did it. Thank you so much. Next item, Sergeant Promotions. Chief, your turn to make introductions.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. So tonight, we're gonna have two sergeants' promotions, so if I could have Dan Hayes and Joe McCamish come forward. So first is Dan Hayes. Dan began his career with the Prescott Valley Police Department on January 8th of 2007 and attended Class 22 of the Northern Arizona Regional Training Academy, or NARDA. During his 10 and a half years with us, Dan has worked as a patrol officer, a school resource officer at Bradshaw Mountain High School, a field training officer, a detective with the Criminal Investigation Section, and a lead police officer. Dan is a general instructor who has instructed stress management and interpersonal communications at NARDA for many years. He and his wife Emma, Emmy, have been married for 21 years today. And they have two sons, Griffin, who will start his freshman year at Cabrini University in Pennsylvania this month, and Hunter, a freshman at Prescott High School. In Dan's free time, he has been a longtime local youth baseball coach, giving back to the community through youth development. He loves spending time with his family and his dogs. Congratulations, Dan. Joseph McCamish graduated in 2002 with a bachelor's degree in psychology from Azusa, did I say that right? Pacific University in California. After college, he joined the United States Army, where he served for the next five years as a Green Beret in the U.S. Special Forces. Joe participated in several operations around the globe, one of which was a full combat tour in Iraq. After leaving the military to start a family, Joe became a deputy sheriff for the Yavapai County Sheriff's Office in 2007. After working for the county for approximately four years, he chose to apply for lateral transfer to the Prescott Valley Police Department in 2011. He has worked in patrol and is a longstanding member of the SWAT team. During his time with us, Joseph has taken a major role in training other officers. His skill in training both civilian personnel and fellow police officers in various critical response matters has been invaluable. He holds training credentials for defensive tactics and firearms, and holds one federal credential for active shooter response training. He has created several lesson plans from scratch regarding critical response issues, all of which are on file with the Arizona Peace Officer Standards and Training Section. Joe and his wife Jessica have four children, Aiden, Elena, Kaylee, and Morgan. Did I get them right? Eliana. Pretty good anyhow. So at this time, I'd ask the mayor to swear you them in.
I, in state your name.
I, Daniel Paul Hayes.
I, Joseph Jonathan McCamish. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the laws of the State of Arizona.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the law of...
Go ahead.
Constitution of the United States of America and the laws of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
Of the position of sergeant for the town of Prescott Valley.
Of the position of sergeant for the town of Prescott Valley.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Now for comments, we'll start with Vice Mayor. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, the mayor says I must make remarks while this is going on, so I wanna really personalize this. I'm going to call them Sergeant Daniel and Sergeant Joseph. You know why? Because it's really personal to them. And we rejoice in their service, we rejoice in their dedication, and we're very proud of their families as well. Thank you for being here for them.
Sure, I'll start it off from back here. Once again, we have two officers who have gone above and beyond their basic training from the academy and done remarkable things within the police department. Anytime we have a police officer that comes before us for either an award or a promotion or for whatever reason it is, when the chief reads what they've done and what they've accomplished, it's always above and beyond what the minimum requirements are. And I know all of our police officers, I mean, all of them, just do outstanding work, and they keep proving again and again and again of the quality of officers that we have here in Prescott Valley. So even though we have two officers here being promoted and we are saluting them, I think our whole police department needs our admiration and support. I mean, they do a fantastic job on a daily basis. So thank you, congratulations, and I'm sure we'll see you up here again. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Jody?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Officer Daniel and Officer Joe, thank you very much for your service to the town of Prescott Valley. It makes a difference when we see all of these folks who come in and support. I know that there have been people that have come before you, and there will be people that come after you, and you're leading the way, and that's appreciated. Thank you for your leadership.
Rick?
Congratulations to both of you, and we look forward to your passing on your knowledge to all of those officers that come into the department now, 'cause everyone will need the guidance that you've learned over the years. So we know we can feel confident that you'll pass that information along, and we feel comfortable living here in this town because of everything that our officers have shown us that they do each and every day. Thank you all for the job that you do.
Yeah, I'd like to give you my sincere appreciation for your commitment and willingness to carry on, and obviously, you're here because you've earned your stripes. And again, I'm always taken back at all the experience and training that you have to make it to this point, and the only thing I can say, I think, today is to give you Godspeed, both you and your family, and congratulations.
Mary?
I'd like to congratulate both of you and want you to know that on a personal level, I always hold all of you, the department, in my heart and my prayers, appreciate the safety you bring to our community and your willingness to go out and do this job, which is not easy. It's, you're gifted people, you're special people, and we're blessed to have you, and God bless you and your families always.
Mrs. McCamish, 20 minutes.
Joe, I'm super proud of you. I'm proud to be your wife and honored to walk with you. You know, it's not just about stripes to me, it's about honoring God in every decision you make, and you are showing our kids every day what it means to walk with the Lord, what it means to make decisions with Him, and I just see God's favor all over you in this, and I just am gonna be praying for these guys that you lead and for every shift, just that, I'm just really proud of you. I love you.
We still have 19 and a half minutes. Mr. McCamish?
I appreciate it, the chance to take this role on, and I'm definitely gonna do my best with it, and it's something that I think I'm gonna do a good job at, but it's also something I'll continue to learn over the course of however many years I have left in this job, but I am grateful for the opportunity and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, Larry, Chief Gerald, I appreciate the opportunity. I don't take this responsibility lightly. I, some great officers that we've worked with here at the department, I look up here, I see some sergeants that I've worked for in the past that have helped me get to this point, like Rob Brown, Tony Lawrence, Kevin O'Hagan, Lieutenant Reese, guys that showed me how to lead, and lead from the front, and lead with honor. So I appreciate it, and I am very grateful. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We're very fortunate, we have an outstanding police department. When a call comes in, action is the word of the moment, and they do it. Thank you, officers. Thank you, police department. You've done a great job, great department. Keep up the good work. Okay, next one is Medal of Valor Awards. Chief?
Can I have Gabe Maldonado, Robert Reese, Brandon Kelly, and Scott Montith come forward? Councilmember Mallory said a moment ago that this job's not easy. Well, it sure isn't. So on the evening of April 5th, 2017, Prescott Valley Police Officers Gabriel Maldonado, Robert Reese, Brandon Kelly, and Scott Montith were on their tour of duty in the town of Prescott Valley. While on patrol, Officer Maldonado, in his last week of field training, and his field training officer, FTO Bobby Reese, noticed an individual in Mountain Valley Park after the park had closed. Officers Maldonado and Reese called in for backup when the person began to exhibit bizarre and strange behavior. The subject appeared to be suicidal and even demanded at one point that the officers should just shoot him. They attempted to persuade this person to seek help, but suddenly, he fled on foot towards a nearby neighborhood. Officers Reese and Maldonado were quickly joined by Officer Kelly, and the three of them attempted to detain the subject using verbal de-escalation skills and tasers, but to no avail. Then, without warning, the subject pulled out a concealed handgun and fired several shots at the officers, and continued running towards the residential neighborhood. Officer Maldonado returned fire and struck the subject, but he still continued to flee towards the neighborhood. Officer Scott Montith, arriving on scene, observed the gunfight and proceeded west on Katy Circle West, where he observed the suspect in the middle of the road. The subject turned and began to fire his weapon towards Officer Montith, and due to the inherent danger to his fellow officers, as well as the residential community, the officer struck the subject with his patrol vehicle, which stopped the deadly threat. Fortunately, the officers were not injured. The subject received medical treatment and was lodged in the county jail. It was later learned that he had verbalized to another individual that he didn't have anything to live for, and he was gonna get into a fight with the police so they would kill him. Officers Maldonado, Reese, Kelly, and Montith demonstrated exceptional valor while remaining calm when responding to this incident. Their training and experience is a direct reflection of how this extremely dangerous situation ended with no other people injured. They made fast, real-time decisions to protect themselves and others by using the appropriate level of force at all times. Officers Maldonado, Reese, Kelly, and Montith handled themselves as true professionals in this dangerous and volatile situation, and their actions are certainly deserving Officer Montith is not here tonight, but I do wanna read the plaque, which reads the same for all. Medal of Valor Award for heroic actions in the defense of his life and the lives of his team members and community. This award is hereby awarded to Officer Scott Montith, Gabriel Maldonado, Brandon Kelly, and Robert Reese.
I gotta get the lump out of my throat. I thank each of you for your valor, but I also wanna thank you for your dedication. I wanna thank you for being examples for all of us to follow. I wanna thank you for helping me sleep better at night. I say that a lot because it's true. I can't believe how blessed we are with our law enforcement officers. I spent 18 years in Phoenix volunteering with the department down there, so I know a little bit about it. You are individually unique, and collectively, you are absolutely remarkable, and I'm including all of you here tonight.
That's clearly a indication of when a call comes in, they have no idea what may be happening. It's action and danger sometimes. We really appreciate that. Chief, any other comments? Any of you gentlemen have a comment? They're scared to comment, I think. Guys, gentlemen, they're...
They're smart.
Maybe they're smart, huh? Even the chief is a little bashful. Thank you so much, gentlemen. Keep up the good work. Good job. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. If I could have Jake Mathis and Justin Ellison come forward? I actually talked about this, I think it was around budget time, and I told a little bit about this to the council, and I told you I'd be bringing it back at a future date. On May 4th of this year, at approximately 5:50 hours early in the morning, Officer Jake Mathis and Officer Justin Ellison responded to a 911 hang-up call in the vicinity of North Sauter Drive East. En route dispatch advised that the caller was so hysterical, they could not communicate with her or get any information. When the officers arrived on scene, they found a mother with a 13-month-old daughter who was unresponsive and not breathing. Now Officer Mathis immediately called for fire and paramedics, and he and Officer Ellison went to work. Officer Mathis performed a head tilt chin lift method, which enabled the baby to breathe a little bit better, but still not on her own. Officer Ellison attempted to use a pediatric suction catheter to clear the airway, but was unsuccessful. Officer Mathis then performed 10 sharp blows to the child's back, and then Officer Ellison reused the suction catheter, and this time was successful in clearing the child's airway. The child had been sick for a day or so, and it was determined that the child had most likely choked or aspirated on her own vomit. Personnel from the Arizona Fire, Central Arizona Fire Medical Authority and Lifeline Ambulance arrived on scene and transported the child to YRMC East Campus, where she was breathing fine and had a full recovery. Without the quick and decisive actions of Officers Ellis and Mathis, this incident may have had a tragic ending. For their actions, they are awarded the department life saving... For their actions, they are awarded the Department Life Saving Award. It simply says, "The Prescott Valley Police Department 2017 Life Saving Award Presented to Officer Justin Ellison and Jake Mathis."
Thank you so much. Chief? Good job.
So, again, I think everybody sees that my officers, while men a few words and women a few words, they are very much indeed ready to jump into the fray and get involved, and they are all action. And I couldn't ask for a better group of people to work with, so I am very proud. Thank you.
He's gonna do it to me again. I'm gonna talk to you as a grandmother and a great-grandmother. Holy moly, thank you!
I think with that, we can present our outstanding police department. Thank you for all of you. Keep up the good work. Thank you. Okay, Chief, anything else? No? Keep up the good work, Chief. Okay, next is Chamber of Commerce. Is Marty here or who's? Oh, here's Brady. Come on up, Brady.
So, as we know, Prescott Valley is quickly growing, one of the fastest-growing places in Arizona, and we've got loads of businesses coming into town. I am here and pleased to welcome and introduce Dawn Wazewicz. She is running Rafter 11, and I'm gonna let her talk a little bit about that.
Hi, my name is Dawn. I am the new kid on the block, and I've just opened a business called Rafter 11, and we're one giant taste experience. We are a coffee and tea bar, and we have homemade scones. We're an olive oil and balsamic bar, and we do the artisan breads for the dipping. We're a slice of the easy gourmet, so we've got spices, and chutneys, and aiolis, and sauces. We even have chocolate sauces with liqueurs. And in another month, we're gonna have a wine selection, so we'll be all about small artisan wines. We've just built a beautiful pergola patio and put up signage, and we also have named the business Rafter 11, and a lot of people ask where the name came from, and that's the name of our ranch, which is here at the base of Mingus. And the actual Rafter 11 is the brand that my dad put on all the cattle on the ranch. And to me, that's very symbolic, because the eleven represents the people and the pillars of this community, like the council, and the chamber, and visionaries like my dad. And the rafter is the rooftop that I'm trying to create, a place where this community can really connect. Oh, and my dad is Bill, and he's quite a visionary for this area. Bill Fain.
She was a little reluctant, but the Fain family, of course, is very prominent in our history and our present, and Dawn, we appreciate that. Anything else, Brady? Thank you so much and congratulations. Yeah, next is a Certificate of Appreciation to Ron Pine for ten years of service. Ron, come on up. Where's Ron? There he is.
Diane, do you have any comments?
Yes, you do, Mayor.
Okay.
Ron came to the Public Works Department, new to the civil engineering field, but had plenty of work experience as an FAA-certified large aircraft mechanic and licensed flight engineer. Ron's work career started in the Coast Guard, working many years, gaining his extensive knowledge as a licensed airframe and power plant mechanic, working on C-130s, KC-135s, and DC-8s. Desiring a career change and setting aside his toolbox of very large airplane wrenches, Ron went to UMass in Boston and earned his civil engineering degree in 2002. Working a few years as an engineer in the Boston area, he left home, leaving his beloved New England Patriots behind, and came to the Prescott Valley as an entry-level engineer in the Public Works Department. Ron demonstrated his proficiency as an engineer and worked his way up fast, becoming the Engineering Division Manager in just a few years on the job. He is also the town's floodplain administrator, earning his FEMA-certified floodplain manager designation while at the town. While accomplishing many successful projects working at the town, Ron still had the calling to continue practicing his skills as a large aircraft mechanic, and transferred to the Arizona Air National Guard upon coming to the town. He would go on deployment for a few weeks every summer, and his Hawaii deployment a few years ago made everyone jealous in Public Works. Some other deployments were not quite so glorious, though. Ron retired from his National Guard service a year ago, leaving at the very prestigious rank of Master Sergeant. The Public Works Department is proud to have the combo civil engineer, large aircraft mechanic, as part of our team. Ron enjoys the diversity of the many job duties he has as an Engineering Division Manager and is always willing to tackle any project coming his way. Ron, excuse me, congratulations on your ten years with the town of Prescott Valley.
I'll be good. He knows I'm honorary. You know, it was well said. We learned new things about you tonight, we always do when we have these opportunities. But Ron, your dedication and your professionalism, even when you're walking the streets with angry citizens, you always keep your cool. I watched that when we had the flood control work done on my street. I already appreciated you and respected you, but that was a tough one for the neighborhood. And you know what? You managed it superbly, and that's what you do with every, every single project. I just got to watch it daily.
Anyone else have any comments? I know that council is working with Ron, or Ron is working with the council. He does a super job. Your comments, Ron?
Just, I can't believe ten years have already gone by, you know. One of the, one of the things that I really liked about coming here was the, the opportunity to, as an engineer, to participate on construction projects that help improve the quality of life for people. I've had that opportunity here, and so I'm very appreciative of it, and appreciative of council's support of staff and direction and leadership. And Larry, you too. Norm, as well. Thank you so much for your, thank you so much for your, your direction and, you know, your mentoring, both you and Norm. Thank you.
With that, Ron, we have a Certificate of Appreciation, an appreciation award, really, for the town of Prescott Valley, presented to Ron Pine, in appreciation for ten years of dedicated service, June 2007 through June 2017. Ron, thank you so much, congratulations. And a pin.
Here's his first emerald.
Is Matt here, Chief?
So, Matt started his career as a police officer with the Prescott Valley Police Department in 2012. However, he actually started a few years before that as an intern while working his way through college, and then moved into the capacity of a volunteer while he completed his studies. During his short tenure, Matt has worked in the Patrol Division and is currently assigned to the Traffic Section. He is certified as a drug recognition expert, a traffic collision reconstructionist, and a terrorism liaison officer. Matt has investigated over 260 collisions, issued more than 1,600 traffic citations, and has made 249 arrests in just five years. He currently serves as the instructor for collision investigation for new recruits at NARDA. Matt is running lead on the department's technology updates, which includes new tablets and the CAD and dispatch transition. He's been married to his wife Kayla for four years, and they are expecting their first child in December. Matt Cahill.
Thank you, I really appreciate the opportunity to be employed here. I love my job, and thank you very much for everything.
Vice Mayor?
It's fun to have all of this going on tonight, because perhaps people who don't always pay attention will now pay attention, because each of you that have come before us have not only achieved, you have excelled, and you've been very diverse in the awards you've received tonight. That tells the entire story of our department.
With that, Matt, we present you with a Certificate of Appreciation, presented to Matthew Cahill, in appreciation for five years of dedicated service to the town of Prescott Valley, May 6, 2012 through May 6, 2017, and your pin. Thank you so much, and congratulations. Okay, next one is Certificate of Appreciation to Wesley Dykman for five years of service. Mr. Dykman, come on up.
Mayor, Officer Wesley Dykman started his law enforcement career with the Prescott Valley Police Department in 2012, graduating from the Northern Arizona Regional Training Academy. Officer Dykman attended the SWAT Mentor Program in 2013, SWAT School in 2014, and became an official SWAT Team Member in 2014. Officer Dykman has achieved his Expert Marksman Ribbon, as well as his Physical Fitness Ribbon, and most recently, Officer Dykman has attended and graduated Field Training Officer School and is now tasked with training and preparing our new recruits to be successful as solo officers as they serve our town. Congratulations on five years.
I think I've used them all up tonight, but I don't want to forget to say how much we appreciate you.
Thank you. And with that, we have a Certificate of Appreciation, presented to Wesley Dykman, in appreciation for five years of dedicated service to the town of Prescott Valley, May 6, 2012 through May 6, 2017, and your pin, and your comments.
Hopefully, I can make it another five.
Keep up the good work. Appreciate that. Okay, next, we have a Certificate of Appreciation. Okay, let's go on to a Certificate of Appreciation of Fernando Gonzalez for his service to the Personnel Board. First Fernando, is he here?
Yep.
There he is. Are you the only one coming up, Fernando? You're it. No...
No, that's up here, you don't have to go.
Here we go.
Rich, Richard, do you have any comments?
As many of you know, Fernando's had a fine career here in Prescott Valley, and we expect a lot of good things out of him to come into the future. Fernando was a non-exempt member of the Personnel Board, and I have some familiarity with that board, because I serve as a alternate, and fortunately, because of Fernando's work, I oftentimes don't have to attend those meetings, because they do a fine job. But we're here today because Fernando does such a good job. I was able to convince Larry and Karen that he needs to be an exempt employee, so I can work him all hours of the evening, seven days a week, as necessary, because he has considerable prowess as the senior code enforcement supervisor, and he does a really good job. That's a tough job to do, nobody wants necessarily to interface with you, but you're there trying to facilitate a good outcome of that interaction. Fernando is superb at that, and I'm really glad that now I have him full-time indentured servitude, because he is now an exempt employee, and I also wanted to thank him for coming back to my office and not having to attend those Personnel Board meetings any longer. Thank you, Fernando.
Diane, do you have another page of information?
No, I do not.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
You know what? You perform in a completely exemplary manner in your job description, but like so many of our employees, you went above and beyond, and you were willing all this time since 2013 to do extra duty, and I don't think anybody up here takes that lightly. I think they all appreciate it very much, so take our deepest, most sincere appreciation for your hard work and your dedication and the extra hours that you've contributed to the betterment of our community.
And somebody up here was gonna come, Mary?
Well, you know, I really do appreciate Fernando, and he is somebody that I've been able to go to and continually go to, and, and he helps me out tremendously. And we, there's a lot of hard stuff goes on in the town, and a lot of things happen. And sometimes, as a person that just goes along every day in this wonderful town, we don't realize what it takes to keep it what it is. And so I appreciate that, because you're in the background maintaining a lot of stuff, and it's not always very pretty, and I want you to know how much I appreciate your time.
Rick?
Well, I want to thank you for your actions on the Personnel Board. I know you'll be missed and hard to replace, and since I'm one of those people that has to start that replacement process, I know how hard it is, and I know how much you will be missed, so thank you for your extra service that you've performed in that capacity and that you're being recognized for tonight. We know what a great job you do from day to day, and we do certainly appreciate that. I wouldn't want to have to be the person that deals with all of that, so I'm glad you are, and I'm glad you can keep a smile on your face after all these years, so thank you once again.
Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to give my congratulations as well, and I think it is something we're witnessing tonight in terms of, you know, I guess the old saying, you're not in Kansas anymore. I think we're really growing in terms of a community that takes a lot of involvement as far as our staff, and they're very much educated, experienced, and go out of their way to, I think, even contribute more to our town, and we appreciate that. And, you know, I think in, in terms of Fernando compared to an officer, we don't see those stripes on your sleeve, but you've definitely earned those, and I know we're going through some, some things that we'll be addressing pretty soon, and we know you'll be there to make sure everything happens correctly, so thank you for your service on the Personnel Board.
Jody?
Fernando, thank you so much. You know, anyone who has served on a Personnel Committee or a Board, they know what it takes. And in a growing community, you stepped up to help make a positive difference. That's appreciated. Thank you very much.
Marty?
Yeah, just let me add my congratulations. Knowing what you do in code enforcement and how busy that keeps you, and the fact that you're able to find the time and effort to also work on the Personnel Board. We have lots of boards and commissions within the town, and some are very active and some are less than active, but the Personnel Board is constantly active, and the fact that you're able to do your job as well as you do it on code enforcement and also do it as well as you do for the Personnel Board, I think that's, it's a great quality to have you in our town working for us, and we appreciate your efforts and the time that you put in. As was said, we do not take it lightly, and we greatly appreciate the efforts of you and others like you who are able to put in the extra time, so thanks again, congratulations.
With that, Fernando, we have an appreciation award, Prescott Valley, presented to Fernando Gonzalez in appreciation for dedicated service on the Personnel Board, September 2013 to July 2017. Fernando, congratulations. And your comments, Fernando?
I just want to thank the Mayor, Council, and staff, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve on Board and help whenever I can. Thank you.
And I'm glad you're an exempt employee. Boy, are you in trouble now. Okay, Council, comments or communications? Council, anyone have any? Rick?
Just one. I wanted to thank Norm's Department. They've been doing the street preparation around my neighborhood for the past month, and for the past two or three days, they've been doing the streets around my house, and they've done an excellent job. They've been very good about moving traffic, about letting us get in and out of our houses, just an outstanding job, so I want to thank you for that. I'm sure that's, they have no idea who I am, so it's not because of me. They're just doing it with everyone that's there, and they are, again, they're doing a great job, and thank you very much.
Good. Any other comments? Mary?
Yeah, Mayor, I wanted to echo with Rick over here because today at work, Norm, I had a customer come through my line and tell me what a great job that you've done over on the streets in their neighborhood and how happy they are, and just very pleased with the town, so I want to thank you, and please take that back to your department.
Good. Any other comments? If there's no more comments, let's move on to our consent agenda. All matters listed under Consent Agenda are considered routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that on a specific item, it will be removed from the Consent Agenda, and it will be considered separately. This includes the accounts payable, approving the radio site maintenance contract with Niles Radio and the amount of $12,600 for 2017 and 18, approving an intergovernmental agreement between town and HUSD to a continued school resource officer program for 2017 and 18, approving the purchase of a new backhoe loader in a total budgeted amount of $99,999.99 from RDO Equipment, approving the amendment to the Town Engineer Agreement with Dave and Associates and the amount of, not to exceed, $24,250 for design services of spouse, drive pavement, overlay project, and approving rejection of all bids submitted for Civic Center roof coating project. Anyone care to pull an item, or do you want to approve it as a whole?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda by electronic vote, or, I'm sorry, by voice vote, I guess. We're not doing electronic. Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
Okay, with a motion and a second, and she said voice vote, so you want to call the roll?
Yes, Mayor, the Wi-Fi for the iPads is down this evening. I understand it should be repaired and addressed tomorrow from our IT Department, so we will do any voting tonight by voice vote. If that's okay with Council?
No choice, I don't think.
So, ready for the vote?
I'll vote at once, or do you want to call the roll?
No, no, I will call the roll. Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Yes.
Mayor Scoog?
Yes.
Councilmembers Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rooney?
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous, Mayor.
Unanimous. Thank you, Diane. Okay, move on to number 10, Old Business for Action, Second Reading of Ordinance Number 832, Approving Amendments to Article 13-26A Outdoor Lighting Requirements of Chapter 13, Zoning to amend the currently required town standard lighting in Section 14 Town Center and update portions of the outdoor lighting requirements to accommodate changing lighting technologies and include LED standards, ZAO A17-002. Are there any comments? That would be, Richard, or anyone? None? Okay. We did discuss this very heavily. Council, have any comments or questions, or motions? Emotions or demotions, commotions? Promotions, anyone?
So, just read the ordinance.
Okay, that's right. That's what I have to do, is ask. Diane, would you read the ordinance by title only?
Yes, Mayor, Ordinance Number 832. In ordinance of the Mayor and the Common Council of the Town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending Article 13-26A Outdoor Lighting Requirements in Chapter 13, Zoning of the Town Code, updating outdoor lighting requirements for Section 14 Town Center and adding standards for the light emitting diode LED lighting, providing that all other chapters, articles, and sections of the Town Code not herein amended shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provisions shall not be affected but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, Diane. With that, again, I would ask, shall the ordinance pass? And again, you want to do a voice vote?
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Rooney?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Mayor Scoog?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Yes.
Again, that is unanimous, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, we move on then to 11A, Consideration of Appointing Jenny Lacaine as the Personnel Board Non-Exempt Board Member with a term to renewal date of April 25, 2018. Laura, you have any comments?
I've made so many comments that I'd ask Councilman Anderson to handle this.
Okay. One position on the Personnel Board became open for the non-exempt Board Member position due to the resignation of Fernando Gonzalez effective June 25, 2017. He was first appointed to Personnel Board September 23, 2013, to an existing term with an expiration date of April 25, 2014, then reappointed to two more consecutive terms with the last term, with a renewal date of April 25, 2018. The Commission Selection Committee invited Jenny, Jeanne, to the current non-exempt alternate Board Member to consider stepping into the non-exempt Board Member position. Try saying that three times. She accepted and submitted a letter, a signed letter of intent. Vice Mayor Nye, myself, and Councilmember Mallory are recommending the appointment of Jenny, I'm going to mess up this last name.
Lacaine.
Lacaine, thank you very much, to fill the vacancy made by Fernando Gonzalez's departure with the term renewal date of April 25, 2018, by voice vote.
Mary, any comments?
No, I just appreciate Jenny's service, and I'd like to make a motion
Okay.
to appoint Jenny to the Personnel Board by voice vote.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you call the vote, Diane?
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Yes, and thank you.
Mayor Scoog?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rooney?
Yes.
That's unanimous, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, we move on then to a consideration of approving Resolution Number 2010, approving a final development plan and sign any agreement under Proposition 207 for Arizona Kidney Disease and Hypertension Center, AKDHC, FDP 17006. Richard, you're up.
Yes, Mayor, Council, you're looking at approximately 11,000 square foot building in very near proximity to the hospital along the north side of Florentine. It's on approximately 1.3 acre parcel. It's currently vacant. That 11,000 square foot building will accommodate a kidney dialysis and hypertension treatment facility in concert with the medical campus associated with YRMC East. The final development plan meets or exceeds the town standards. Staff recommends approval. I'd respond to any questions you may have. I do have a rendering or an elevation. Kind of a nondescript professional building. We hope to release permits shortly after your action this evening. Thank you.
Good. Any questions, comments, or motions? Vice Mayor?
I just think we're very fortunate to have this facility here, and myself, I'm very, very relieved, so I would be delighted to make a motion if there's no other questions or comments. Motion to authorize the mayor in his absence the Vice Mayor to sign Resolution Number 2010, approving FDP 17, Zer-016, and to sign any agreement under Proposition 207 by voice vote.
Mayor, I'll second that.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you call the vote, Diane?
Councilmember Rooney?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Mayor Scoog?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nye? Vice Mayor Nye? Yes?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
I have to recuse myself.
And Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Thank you. That's six to one with Councilmember Anderson abstaining.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, move on then to C, Consideration of Approving Resolution Number 2011, adopting and approving the Final Development Plan Number 17-007, Dunkin' Donuts. Anybody ask you about that, Richard?
They certainly do, and actually, he's sitting right over here, but he's most pleased to have the hypertension treatment because of his coffee addiction to Dunkin' Donuts. Yeah, pleased to let you know, Mayor Council, that finally Dunkin' Donuts can be located at the corner of Glassford Hill Road and Center Court, a long been a vacant property. We're very pleased to see it develop. A preliminary development plan was reviewed and approved by the Planning and Zone Commission last month. Larry will be pleased to know this also has a drive-through, and it's very near the Rafter 11 shop that you talked about. It's actually right across the street. This 1.3 acre parcel will accommodate about 3,200 square feet, and it'll be a little over 1,800 square feet that will be available for future tenant occupancies as well. The preliminary development plan received unanimous recommendation from the Planning and Zone Commission. Staffs reviewed the final development plan, found it to be congruent with our standards, and on that basis, we recommend approval. I'd respond to any questions you may have. Again, we have permits in hand, plans ready to be released, and I'm sure Larry would love to have those things released so that in as little as four months before Christmas, he can drink his Dunkin' Donut.
Any comments, Larry?
Actually, yes. It isn't Dunkin' Donuts anymore.
It's Dunkin'.
They have rebranded the franchise, and now it is just Dunkin'. In the same way that Native New Yorker that is under construction over in Crossroads, they rebranded that company, and it is now called just Native. So, I look forward to going to Dunkin'.
And right next door to Dunkin' will probably be Larry's Annex Office, because there, again, you can see from this illustration that there's tenant space next to that.
Good. Mary?
Well, this is another conversation I had with some people coming to Sprouts today, asking about the Dunkin' Donuts and where is it and when is it coming? And of course, on the trip that we recently took back east, Dunkin' Donuts is everywhere. I mean, everywhere. And so there's a lot of excited people that have moved here from the East Coast that are excited about this, so...
I can remember when Dunkin' Donuts used to be in Prescott, then Dunkin' Donuts left. Now, where is the Dunkin', where the Dunkin' going to go? It's going to be in Prescott Valley. Why? Because that's the place to develop in the Quad Cities, is Prescott Valley. There's been a lot of hard work going to lead the Quad City economic development, and we've, I think, done a really good job, as evidenced by the fact that now Dunkin' is going to be in the town of Prescott Valley.
Any other, Laura?
I do have a tongue-in-cheek question for you. If we have Dunkin' and we have Native, will it be Chick by the time they open? He's ignoring me.
Rick, I'm sorry, John, yes, Laura?
Do you need a motion, Mayor?
I think, do you have a comment? Jody had a comment.
I'd be happy to make a motion.
Oh, okay.
All right. Motion to authorize the mayor or in his absence the Vice Mayor to sign Resolution Number 2011, adopting and approving Final Development Plan 17-007, Dunkin' Donuts.
And I'll second that, Mayor.
Second, anyone?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you call the vote, Diane?
Councilmember Grossman?
Oh, yeah.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Yes, and yum.
Mayor Scoog?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Rooney?
Oh, yeah.
That's unanimous, Mayor.
Well, thank you, Diane. We've studied all these issues, so it's great. Okay, we'll move on then to the consideration of approving an intergovernmental agreement with Yavapai County Flood Control District for the Viewpoint Flood Plane Channelization, Viewpoint Spouse Intersection Improvements, and FEMA remapping project. Norm?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. We did talk about this at Workday last week. Ron presented this item, but what is, this is standard procedure. We do receive funding every year for project funding from the Yavapai County Flood Control District through the levy, through property taxes, so it does go through where the flood control projects. This year's particular allotment is $800,000. We've got several projects lined up for that particular, so this is the first step for us to get the money first, and we'll follow up with the projects next for that funding for stormwater management projects. I did want to mention this exhibit you see ahead of you. We are working on Phase Three of the Viewpoint Channel. Council may be aware, this is four years old, and exhibit hasn't changed. What we have done, though, is use the funding we have every year in order to do a phased approach in order to see this particular improvement to completion. So, I'm happy to report that we'll be bringing this to you soon, and Phases One and Two are complete, and this one caps off, which is this year's funding, in order to finish that particular channel in Phase Three. In addition, one of the other projects is the spouse viewpoint intersection. It's also shown very well here that some of that stormwater management in that channel, we've got some piping that we can apply for floodplain management, because this is a FEMA floodplain, so funding, that's what the funding's for, and we're going to do improvements to stormwater management area. The last slide is, of course, I believe Council's aware that we've, we're successful also with the flood control district and getting our FEMA maps updated, so we've implemented those in June, so part of this money can go to helping implement those particular mappings, helping the residents that need some help, and/or any mitigation or small projects we can do in order to help residents with any floodplain issues with the particular properties, so there's some money available for that. So, those are three projects, $800,000, and we're looking forward in the coming weeks to bring these projects to you and build them and spend the money. Any questions?
Anyone? Comments? Motions? We've studied this a lot already.
Good thing.
Good job, Norm. Good job, Norm.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to make a comment, and I'll make a motion. I'm happy to see the progress we've been making over the last three or four years, and I think it's important to our community. We've had some areas that have had an impact, and I think we're mitigating that. So I think both the Council, if I can speak for the Council, is happy, and I think the residents are very happy. And I love the fact that we're coordinating or collaborating with Yavapai County as well, so it's a great project.
Yeah, thank you.
So there's no other thoughts? I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with Yavapai County Flood Control District for the Viewpoint Flood Plane Channelization, Viewpoint Spouse Intersection Improvements, and FEMA Remapping Projects.
I'll be glad to second.
Okay. Other comments, questions? Diane, we have a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Rooney?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Yes.
And Mayor Scoog?
Yes.
That's unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Okay, we go on to number E, consideration of approving the First Amendment to the Arizona Site Lease with All Links, including First Amendment to the Site Sublease between All Links and Speed Connect to relocate a telecommunications facility at Mountain Valley Park. Norm, any comments? Or Brian?
Mr. Mayor and Council, Larry says that I've been goofing off all evening, and so he thinks it's about time I did something.
Okay, well, we'll go along with that. You're up, Ivan.
This is, as you know, we have our lease with All Links, where they are allowed to enter into subleases with telecommunications companies to put telecommunications, wireless telecommunications facilities on some of our light poles or our water tanks and things like that. We have a number of those in Mountain Valley Park, and this company has gone to All Links and said, "We'd like to move our facility from one pole to another." And in order to do that, we've got to amend the lease with All Links and then the sublease with this company, and that's what they're proposing to do tonight. They'll continue to make payments, as they do every month, and they'll just move it from one facility to another. I'm not sure why, but it must be easier to reach their customers from the other pole.
Location, location, location.
Good. Any other comments, questions, motions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve this First Amendment to the Antenna Site Lease with All Links, including the First Amendment to the Site Sublease between All Links and Speed Connect to relocate a telecommunications facility at Mountain Valley Park.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, Diane?
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rooney?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Mayor Scoog?
Yes.
That's unanimous, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, we're going to comments from the public, consideration and discussion. These... Those wishing to address the Council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the Council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. At the conclusion of the unscheduled comments, individual members of the Council may respond to the item addressed at the discretion of the mayor, or they may ask the Town Manager to review the matter or ask that the matter be placed on the future agenda. Anyone care to make any comments? Yes, sir, come on up. Good to see you. Appreciate your coming. I don't know if you were or not. Anyway, Mayor and Council members, I have a list of stuff that I don't understand. I moved here 16 years ago, and I love the area, and I did not bring California with me. Okay?
Would you give us your name?
Yeah.
Larry Wilson.
I'm sorry. Yeah, Larry Wilson. Anyhow, driving around the area, I see a lot of stuff that the... That the code enforcement isn't looking at. Cars parked between fences and houses, trees growing up around them, grass growing up through them. It just... The town's, to me, is deteriorating in certain parts of the area. And it just... I just don't like to see it, you know? My street on Valerie, to a point, is really clean. We've got a couple places that aren't really clean, and I've mentioned it to the code enforcement, and they say, "Well, we'll take a look," but it's still a mess. And whether they have a chance to go look and, you know, all you got to do is write up a thing, stick it on their windows, say, "Please clean up your area," you know? There's a few of us that are... That have nice areas in town. But anyway, and then there's some... These, whatever these wild trees are growing in the ditches, where the pipes come in, water comes into the pipe, trees are growing there, and where it's going out of the pipe, trees are growing up in there, which is blocking water from free-flowing and causing it to go up and over. And that's been that way for quite a spell. And then I know Mr. Gerald's here. I need to ask him a question or two. But, you know, when you make... When you're coming off of a road going to make a left turn, people aren't making left turns into left-turn lanes. You make your left turn, people fly their ass around you, and, you know, if you're not really looking, you're going to get a lot of wrecks. The other day, I turned off onto Robert Road, and I went away, turned my signal on, looked in my mirror, and here comes a black car about 50 miles an hour by me. Then on this side comes a white car doing the same thing, and they're racing down Robert Road, and doing about 60, 70 miles an hour. And I see a lot of this happening. But where is the police? They're not around. And you can drive street after street after street in PV, and you don't see a policeman. And then if you have an accident on 69, here they all come. Well, they're all coming from the area of the police station mostly. And it just don't make sense. That's probably all I got to say right now, but is there a law that you don't have to use turn signals to make a left or a right turn when you're in a turn lane? And is there a law saying that you can... I mean, it's disappeared, saying that when you make a left off of a street and stay in a left before you move to the right, is there some law that says, you know, just go over the right lane and go like hell? You know, which happens a lot, and you've all seen it happen, you know? I just want... Just need some questions answered. Why is this all happening, and nothing's being done? Okay, I think you're going to be welcome... Your comments are welcomed by us. Your comments are welcomed by us. Thank you. And I'm sure the chief, and I'm sure code enforcement, if you have any other questions, you might take a little time with Town Manager and ask him when you get a chance. But also, you know where our office is. Always feel free to... Yeah. Yeah, I know. I got a card from you, but things have been happening around home, and I just haven't had a chance to get ahold of you and come up and talk to you about things and stuff. And I'd like for Larry to be there and the chief to be there, you know, so we can get some answers. There's a lot of people, and I've talked to, that mentioned... I've mentioned these things, and they say, "Well, we don't come to the meeting because there's nobody here to listen to us," you know? Well, you people will listen, but you don't have anybody to back us up? Like, right now, there's nobody here to back me up. You know? I'm the bad guy. I come down for the other guys. Good job, Larry. We appreciate it. Okay. Thank you much. Thank you so much. You bet. Anyone else got any comments? If there's no more comments, we have one more item we have to tend to, and it's one that everybody hates. We need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Okay. Second, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, Diane?
Mayor Scoog?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Rooney?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Out of here.
Councilmember Anderson? Thank you. That's unanimous, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.